I get through, right? Sorry, I hate to use the gavel. It's so unfortunate, but if I could just have everyone's attention. Great, thank you. Welcome, everyone, to this evening's Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education meeting, today Monday, November 18th, 2024. The location of this meeting is Grover Cleveland Middle School. Tonight, the board met in executive session at 6:00 PM in the Library Media Center here at Grover Cleveland Middle School, 36 Academy Road in Caldwell. The purpose of that meeting was to discuss personnel litigation, miscellaneous, and old business matters. That meeting has been advertised and is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. The matters discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required and formal action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a meeting to which the public has been invited. Tonight, the regular public monthly meeting is taking place at 7:05, forgive our tardiness, here in the cafeteria. The Board of Education meeting will be streamed live, but all community questions and comments will be welcomed here in person. The Caldwell West Caldwell Board of Education Public Conference meeting is also in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act and NJSA 10:4-6, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notices have been sent to the Progress in Caldwell, New Jersey, the Star Ledger, Newark, New Jersey, and Tupp into West Essex. Notices have also been posted at the Board of Education Business Office at the Harrison School Building, Gray Street, West Caldwell, and have been delivered to the clerks of the borough of Caldwell and township of West Caldwell for posting. Brian, can you take the roll?
Yes, Student Representative Megan Pack.
Here.
Ms. DiMartini.
Here.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. D'ambola.
Here.
Ms. Grosso.
Here.
So we have five voting members present, and we have a quorum.
Great.
Megs, want to do the quorum?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Brian, are there any communications for the board this evening?
There were none.
Okay, great. So we're going to start with the superintendent's report.
Can I invite Landon Kelly and Michael Rankin up to the microphone, please? Landon joins us from the House of Integrity and Michael joins from the House of Leadership.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Conklin and the Board of Education for inviting us to speak tonight. I am Landon Kelly and I'm representing the House of Integrity.
Good evening, I am Michael Rankin from the House of Leadership.
This marking period, GCMS reinstated the enrichment program. Students were able to choose an enrichment class to attend every other Wednesday. Classes ranged from nature photography to lacrosse. This Wednesday was our first enrichment day and everyone had a good time.
Before Halloween, all of the students at GCMS had to draw and create jack-o'-lanterns in their advisories. Then all the house leaders went around the school on October 30th and taped the jack-o'-lanterns on the school walls. After that, we picked three jack-o'-lanterns for the students to find. On Halloween, the three winners won a prize.
The week leading up to Halloween had everyone in the school playing Halloween Clue. Everyone in the morning and in the afternoon, every day in the morning and the afternoon, there was a clue to try to find out who was the person who snuck into the school one night. Mr. Teshkoyan, Mr. Kotleski, Ms. Strangeway, Mr. Bertolo, Mrs. Tucker, and Mrs. Otensky all agreed to participate and play the roles of Professor Plum, Colonel Mustard, Mrs. White, Mrs. Peacock, and Wadsworth the Butler. It was a fun whodunit mystery to lead into Halloween and promote the upcoming Clue production at the high school.
The school also participated in a district-wide food drive for the Caldwell Food Pantry. GCMS collected over 200 food items and the House of Integrity brought in the most food.
The Builders Club is hosting a PJ drive for people in need of clothes. Kids from GCMS are donating pajamas to families in need.
The house leaders host intermural games for the school throughout the year for some friendly after-school competition and team building. Our most recent one was handball. As a house leader, you can ref the games or coach your team. During the tournament, there is a set bracket made for the teams to play. For example, citizenship and respect were in the finals of handball and citizenship ended up winning. On Friday, GCMS heard from a variety of speakers for our first Unity Day. My favorite part of being a house leader so far this year is being able to lead the young sixth graders and seventh graders. I also like coaching and refereeing during the intermurals. Lastly, I like to participate in house days and do fun activities for my house.
My favorite part of being a house leader so far this year is being able to help people out with food drives and make a difference where and when I can. Another thing I like about house leader is that I got to participate in the lip sync battle against the teachers on the house day before the holiday break. Thank you again, Dr. Conklin and members of the Board of Education for your time. Do you have any questions?
No, but you guys were awesome. Thank you so much. Good job.
I'd also now like to invite up Robert Savistano. He's going to talk to us about Clue. Robert, did I get your name right?
You did.
Robert, are you being formal this evening or are you in costume for us?
I mean very formal. I like to show. Good evening. My name is Wadsworth and I am the butler at Boddy Manor. You are all cordially invited to Boddy Manor this weekend, Friday, November 22nd through Sunday, November 24th. It will be to your advantage to be present on these dates because a Mr. Boddy will bring to an end a certain longstanding and painful financial liability. Do you have any clue to what I am talking about? Based on the popular 1985 movie, which was itself inspired by the iconic board game, the stage play Clue is a hilarious fast-meat murder mystery. Presented by the JCHS Drama Club, our tale begins at a remote mansion where six guests assemble for an unusual dinner party at which blackmail and murder are on the menu. When our host turns up dead, everyone becomes a suspect. With my able assistants, the remaining guests, Ms. Scarlett, Professor Plum, Mrs. White, Mr. Green, Mrs. Peacock, and Colonel Mustard race to find the killer as the body count stacks up. Clue is a comedy whodunit that will have you all in stitches as you try to figure out who did it, where, and with what. Performances are at the JCHS Center for Performing Arts this Friday and Saturday at 7:30 PM and a final set Sunday matinee at 2:00 PM. All tickets are $5 and can be purchased at the door or online at rshow.jchsclo. We look forward to seeing you back.
Does that have a comment I would like to make, if that's okay?
Sure.
Just want to let the district know that and the community know that our district values of community, equity, inclusion result in our schools incorporating developmentally appropriate and standards-aligned experiential learning opportunities to extend and enhance student learning. Events like Make a Difference Day, King University Holocaust Center, which presented about antisemitism and acceptance, Dr. Paul Wischansky presented about disability acceptance, anti-bullying, and resilience, and Aja Mayrock told her story and discussed her experiences in her book Survival Guide to Bullying. These are examples of the experiential learning we provide our students and staff at Grover Cleveland Middle School. This year, we launched Unity Day to help enrich the experiential learning opportunities for our students and our staff. We are deeply committed to ensuring that the schools are safe, welcoming, and inclusive environments for all students regardless of race, ethnicity, sex, and gender identities, mental and physical abilities, and religious beliefs. Our assemblies are designed to reinforce our curricula that highlight the contributions and experience of individuals with diverse abilities, cultures, identities, and perspectives. The Unity Day assemblies were directly aligned with our district's commitment to inclusion as well as with the New Jersey student learning standards and the district's mission values, vision, and goals. Please understand that we value open and clear communication as an essential foundation for trust and collaboration with our community. Your feedback is incredibly valuable to us and we welcome your thoughts on improving in the future. Therefore, moving forward, additional details regarding any future assemblies and their topics will be both transparent and thorough. In addition, we welcome families to contact their child's teachers, school counselors, and administrative team with any questions, recommendations, or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to the president's report. I'd like to start with the committee reports, if that's okay with them all?
Sure.
Okay, we'd like to go first.
I can go first. Okay. The Finance and Facilities Committee met virtually on October 30th from 4:30 PM to 5:00 PM. Board committee members present included President Julian Grosso and myself, Danielle Mack. From the administration was Brian McCarthy. The committee reviewed all finance and facility agenda items from the November 4th regular meeting. The committee discussed a letter from the New Jersey Department of Education, which approved modifications to the district's long-range facilities plan. The modifications included some of the projects that will be a part of our March 2025 referendum. Last but not least, the committee reviewed and approved the purchase of a new sign for the JCHS softball field. The field will be renamed Teshkoyan Park in honor of longtime softball coaches, Coach the late Coach Mark Teshkoyan and his brother Craig Knight. The naming of this field holds a very special place in my heart. I went through the softball program, they were both my coaches, they are just the most amazing humans. Coach Mark, you know, passed a few years back, but I just, their leadership was amazing. We celebrated so many victories on the field and I know there's many more victories to come, but I think just one of the greatest celebrations that they always instilled upon me and the other players was not about winning, but it was about commitment and sportsmanship and teamwork and community. So we're really excited about this and yeah, we're looking forward to the unveiling of the signage. We'll celebrate more in the spring, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That it?
That's it.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board?
It's exciting.
Okay, curriculum?
Yep.
So on November 12th, myself, Teri DiMartini, Ms. Lindofy Jefferson, Dr. Conklin, and Ms. Jones all met virtually to discuss instructional programs, proposals, and partnerships together as a part of the Curriculum and Technology Committee. One thing that was shared with us is that on December 10th from 5:30 to 6:30 here at Grover Cleveland Middle School, there will be an ESL Family Event, which will provide families with an information session that has community resources as well as a community building event. And we're really grateful to the staff for providing that opportunity for our families, so thank you very much. Also, you'll now see on the Board of Ed website, there is an Atlas tab, which provides links to rubrics for curriculum, so you can go in and look up certain classes and see what's, you know, the curriculum set up for that. It's very interesting and fun and, you know, you can get kind of lost doing it all, but clearly a lot of work went into setting that up, so thank you to all of the staff that made that happen. That's it.
Great. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope.
Good. We're going with everything else, personnel policy. Good. Okay, great. So we're going to move now to approval of minutes. I'll make a motion? Do you approve the minutes? Okay. Great, and can I have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, can you take the roll?
Yes. Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Great. We're going to move into public comments on agenda items only, okay? I know there's a bunch of you here that want to address the board this evening. If it's anything off of the agenda, particularly anything concerning the Unity Day, that's going to have to be held to the second part of the meeting when we do public comment, okay? For both sections of public comment and while people are speaking this evening, whether people are speaking at this table or people are up at the microphone speaking, I'm going to ask for public decorum, okay? Any side comments, snickering, laughing, name-calling, please, we're adults, there are children in the room, let's behave and set a good example, all right? That's all I ask. The board is here, welcome, open to listening to you, we value what you have to say, but it has to be done in a respectful manner, okay? So right now, this is just agenda items only, all right? So public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment periods of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or a cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board this evening will be resolved. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time or are objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during the public comment sessions, okay? Does anyone have anything to say right now on the agenda items only? Yeah.
Should I take the, okay, does this work? Have to turn it on? Okay, great. Good evening, board trustees. Mike Mignon, 23, Westville Avenue, Caldwell. So I just had, I just had two topics on the agenda I wanted to address, and one was the referendum. I have a question about the referendum.
The referendum's not on the agenda, so you'll have to hold that till the second part.
It was just the chairperson just said it, right?
That's a committee report, but it's not an agenda item, so if it's a referendum, feel free, Mike, to come back up at the end, we'll totally listen, but not right now, it's just on the agenda.
Okay, so can I address Superintendent's Report number three, school self-assessment for determining grades under the anti-bullying?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I can't get that on my phone, I know the board docs goes a little bit further into it. I tried to get it on my phone, I can't. Can you please explain what that is, because I do have something I want to speak about that, so.
Every school does a self-assessment to see where they are in terms of the professional development they're providing, how they're supporting students through the HIB process. So each school does an individual self-assessment and then we report that to the Department of Education. So that's the individual self-assessment reports. Each school does their own individual self-assessment.
Okay.
And there's different questions and specific questions they respond to. I think the score is out of 79. Each different question is worth one to three points. So they're on the agenda, you could look at those, each individual school has their own reports.
Okay. So is there anything in there that assesses the policy that, I mean, I know that the policy is based off of state law, I know that, but it's really individual to the school because it's very general how they speak about anti-bullying. It's specific in some ways, but the way that you go about your policy is really left up to the school to go about that policy. And I take issue to the policy of bullying in this district and the way you guys handle it. So is that reviewed also? Because if not, I would ask that you revisit that policy also, and I have an example of why.
You mean the board policy itself?
Yeah, yeah, the board policy on how you handle-
The individual schools don't look at the board policy, they look at the professional development, the implementation of that policy.
Okay.
They don't look at that individual policy, the policy is discussed at a policy meeting.
So could we think about, and I'd like to talk about this, because I would think that we should probably revisit the way district handles HIB. I have two children in there, or two young men in this district that have been in this district since kindergarten, okay? I had one of them, my youngest one, Nicholas, who was just, I just got a letter through the mail saying that he was under an investigation for possible HIB. So of course, that's a major concern in our family, being that that's actually contradictory to what we teach our kids, right? So we teach our kids, you stick up for kids that are being picked on. And here it is, I have a son that's now, you know, in other words, being called a bully, right? I get no information on this, none at all. And I'm actually told when I inquire about it that I have to wait until the investigation's over. So then, right away, I'm saying, okay, but if there's an investigation, this has to be serious and this is my kid, I want to make sure that I know what's going on, because as a parent, I have to do my end of it too, right? But we're left in the dark. You're left in the dark until the very end, and then in the very end, you're told, okay, this is unfounded. Okay, well, what happened? Well, you have to request a redacted investigation, which I received, which was useless in a way, because it was just, you know, interviewing a couple of kids and it came back unfounded, okay? So the reason why I'm up here is because what you don't realize is that puts a stigma on a student. Now, I know you're going to tell me, or everybody's going to tell me that, oh, nobody knows about this, nobody knows about this. I'm a teacher. Every teacher in the building knows about it, trust me. The faculty room, that's what they talk about, in case you didn't know that, right? So, oh, this so-and-so just got, you know, charged with bullying. So if one teacher in the district, which is going to be the anti-bullying coordinator, knows about it, pretty much the entire faculty knows about it, right? So now, your kid's walking around the building with a stigma of being a bully and no one knows the details, and we can all say, everybody in this room can always say that, there's got to be some truth to it, right? That's what we always think about. But meanwhile, there's no truth to it and no one will ever believe that. So I really would hope that you could revisit this, because I think what's lacking is there's no principal or school head intervention in this process. Pretty much what the counselor told me, the HIB coordinator told me, is once a kid makes some type of accusation of HIB, it's automatically hands down an investigation. There's no pre-investigation, which we have in our district. We have a pre-investigation where the principal takes a look at the facts, because it could be one of three things. It could be a code of conduct, maybe it was just a one-time incident, two kids messing around, and we have to go to our policy, our school policies, and implement a code of conduct. It could be a mediation, two kids just kind of had something going on and, you know, never happened before, and maybe want to look into it and want to inquire about it and see if this is something we could just settle. Hey, you know what, we're good, we're good, okay, great, go about your way. But right away, we think bullying and we go right that way. And I think that that's terrible, and I really am here to clear my son's name, because he's not a bully. And when I got the redacted report at the end, I was kind of like, okay, well, this should have never even went to investigation. The two kids, the kids that were in there said nothing ever really happened, the teacher said nothing happened, all that went that way, and then yet, there was this big investigation that really was, took us probably the better part of 15 days, I think you get 10 days, but with weekends and everything, it took about 15 days for us to get anything back, and then we got a letter to the mail saying it was unfounded. So what I'm asking this board to do is to revisit this policy to where you give some credence to what the building administrator has to say about it. Because, you know, number one, you're going to alleviate a lot from your HIB coordinators, because they're going to get just an influx of it. And just to put this out there, that same kid who accused my son of being a bully is accusing other kids left and right, and there's lots of issues with that student. So if you continue doing this, all you're doing is allowing, you're enabling kids to go out and say things just because they know that it's going to give another kid a hard time. So look into it, because the way the state law explains this, what schools can do, is they say that just because something's put up as an HIB doesn't necessarily mean it is. It could be one of three things, HIB, code of conduct, or mediation. So we don't get to those other two, because we go right into HIB. So I would ask, that's all, I'm up here just asking if you guys would revisit that policy.
Yes.
Thank you.
So policy?
Thank you, thank you, Mike.
So policy. Anybody else for agendas on, items, I'm sorry, on the agenda only at this point in time? Okay. Okay, great. So we're going, this is a voting meeting, it's our only meeting of the month, so we're going to move forward through the vote and then we'll go to public comment, open public comment back at the end. So we're going to start with curriculum and technology. Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools' motion to approve items A through G under Curriculum and Technology on this evening's agenda. Great, and can I have a second?
I'll second.
And Brian, whenever you're ready, if you could just take the roll, please.
Yes, Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Okay, personnel?
Upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools' motion to approve items B through F, cabling A under certificated staff, and items A under non-certificated staff and personnel on this evening's agenda.
Yep. Any questions or comments on that from the board?
No.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Brian, whenever you're ready.
Ms. DiMartini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Okay, finance and facilities?
Upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools' motions to approve items A through H under finance and item A under facilities on this evening's agenda.
Great. Any comments or discussion from the board? Okay, then can I have a second?
I'll second.
Great, and Brian, whenever you're ready.
Ms. Steve Martini.
Yes.
Ms. Lindofy Jefferson.
Yes.
Ms. Mack.
Yes.
Mr. D'ambola.
Yes.
Ms. Grosso.
Yes.
Five zero, motion carried.
Okay, we have nothing to vote on for policy this evening, but Mike, we are going to go back and look at that policy, okay? The policy committee will meet and review that for you, okay? All right, so now we're going to move on to public comments. So this is the public comment portion of the meeting where anyone can get up and address the board on any topic, okay? Once again, I'm going to remind everyone of the parameters of public comment. Public participation shall be governed by the following. Participant must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface comments by an announcement of their name and address. Statements are to be limited to three minutes duration. Participant may speak no more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. Boards use the public comment period of the meeting as an opportunity to listen to citizen concerns, but not to debate issues or enter into a question and answer session or a cross-examination between the public and individual members. Be aware that not all issues brought before the board this evening will be resolved. Boards may respond to public comment by seeking additional information or by delegating the authority to investigate the issue to the superintendent or his designate. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's comments if they exceed the allotted time or are objectively obscene. Participants may be civilly liable for any obscene, defamatory, or slanderous statements made during public comment. That being said, would anyone like to come up and address the board this evening? Yes, please. Now, Madeline, we have this hand first and then we'll just, if you want to wait there until you can be that, because Mike, go right ahead.
Yep.
I have to go out and ask the board?
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jordan Best, I live at 53 Berkendine Road. I'm a local mom of two kids in our school district, one at Jefferson Elementary and one here at the middle school. My husband grew up in Caldwell and attended public schools all the way through. We graduated in 98. When we decided to choose a town to raise our family, we chose Caldwell. And we believe our public schools are the right place to send our kids. I'm here to show support for the middle school administration for highlighting anti-bullying and inclusion at last week's Unity Assembly. I'd like to speak specifically about why teaching kids about LGBTQIA bullying is so important right now. When my son was in fourth grade at Jefferson, we used to stay and play on the playground after school all the time. And one day, I heard an elementary school student, couldn't have been older than third grade, call another kid a gay slur. I was shocked and saddened that already in elementary school that this behavior had begun. I'm here because there are many parents in town that a Unity Assembly that addressed queer rights would never have raised a flag. Many people still probably don't know that it happened and certainly not that it ruffled any feathers in town. We would have been confused and upset if queer rights hadn't been addressed. I find it troubling that we wouldn't think twice about a Unity Assembly that addressed race, culture, disabilities, and religion, but we're, but here we are in 2024, thinking about or debating whether queer rights should be addressed. Programs like those that Garden State Equality led last week are such a helpful resource to our schools, our teachers, and our kids, and I am personally so thankful that our school was able to have them. After speaking with my sixth grader who attended the assembly, he found the presentation After speaking with my sixth grader who attended the assembly, he found the presentation to be informative, friendly, and helpful. He was even able to speak with the presenter afterward about some of the things that he's heard online and in video games that have really troubled him, and he was met with kindness, understanding, and support. I think we can all agree that growing up is hard. That middle school is hard. Puberty is hard. The 2020s have been hard. Our kids have lived through a pandemic. They are figuring out who they are at one of the most divisive times in our history and they are doing that all under the microscope that is social media and the internet, something none of us had to do. Our schools should be havens of support where they can learn not just about academics but about the diverse and amazing world around them. So I'd like to speak not only on behalf of parents in this town who want a warmer and more inclusive and positive atmosphere at our schools, but also on behalf of our kids because at the end of the day, this is about them, not us. So here are some important statistics about the kids. According to a 2024 U.S. National Survey of the Mental Health of LGBTQ+ Young People, 42% of LGBTQ middle school students reported being bullied at school or on the way to school. Another report shows that 83.1% of LGBTQ+ students have reported experiencing harassment or assault due to personal characteristics such as sexual orientation or gender expression at school. Over, queer youth identified bullying as the second most important problem in their lives after non-accepting families compared to non-queer youth that identified classes, exams, grades. And sadly, suicide is the second-leading cause for all kids aged 10 to 14. Queer kids are more than four times as likely to attempt suicide than their peers. And we're not just, as we're talking about all of this, it's not just about the kids who are being bullied. When bullying occurs, youth who witness bullying, known as bystanders, are present 80% of the time. And bystanders may feel guilty about their inaction. They might feel unsafe then at school and they can also be at an increased risk of depression, anxiety, drug use, and absenteeism. So where do inclusive curriculum and affirming schools come in? Why do they matter? Affirming environments, a supportive environment such as LGBTQ affirming schools can reduce bullying rates across the board by approximately 30%. Including LGBTQIA+ topics in school curriculums reduces bullying or harassment for all students. Schools with such curricula report lower rates of victimization based on sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. All students in these inclusive schools are also less likely to feel unsafe due to their identity.
Ms. Best, I don't want to stop you, but you have a minute left, so I don't want to, I'm sorry, I don't want to.
You go so fast.
I don't want to force you to go faster.
No, no.
A lot of great information, so I apologize for interrupting.
Tiny bit left, I promise. So all students in inclusive schools are also less likely to feel unsafe due to their identity, fostering a sense of belonging and safety that reduces bullying across the board. And finally, students in schools with inclusive programs and supportive staff report improved mental health, higher self-esteem, and better academic outcomes. So again, just to close, I'd like to really thank the administration for working to build an inclusive and supportive environment for all of our kids here in Caldwell. And I hope that my presence stands not just for each of the parents in our towns that want a diverse, safe, and welcoming environment at our schools, but also for each and one, every one of our amazing, creative, and outstanding kids that are just trying to figure out who they are in this world.
Madeline, you want to go?
Sorry, that was my fault. I didn't start the timer right.
That's okay, that's okay.
I'll make sure I have it now. Three minutes, sorry. I'll wait, I'm sorry, I forgot, I didn't start it. I'm guilty.
And I'm on a completely different topic.
I apologize.
That was said so eloquently and I am on a completely different topic and that's very difficult to follow. But I wanted to go first to get in before everybody else got theirs.
That's okay.
Madeline Brown, 13 Berkene Dean Road. I have a question regarding the two Department of Education investigations that were opened on October 21st against the district. The Title VI Shared Ancestry one and the Sexual Violence one, both on the same day, which, so one question obviously is if they are connected, regardless of what they are. I'm looking for a little bit of information on what they are. And I know you're going to tell me they're private and privileged. The U.S. Department of Education has a page open and aside from all the ones that are Freedom and Information Act requests, they have a page where every, the ones that they think are going to really get a lot of requests are already on the page. So it is public information, of course, with some details redacted. So before I go and forward that information, I'm hoping for a little bit of transparency from our board, particularly giving the history of our own HIBs in this district. I know a lot of things have gone down at the high school. I know there's different clubs, a lot of things that this could be attributed to. So I'm hoping for a little bit of information from the board about what these are attributed to.
Please, Caitlin, if I say something I'm not supposed to say, make sure I don't say that.
Okay.
I can, thank you very much. There are two open officer civil rights investigations filed against the school district. It was a student-to-student incident that happened two years ago and there's an ongoing, there was an investigation by the school district two years ago and someone has filed an OCR complaint against the school district. So we are cooperating with that investigation.
From an incident two years ago?
From an incident two years ago, yes. I can't really get into the details because it involves another student, but I can say that it was student-to-student and it was not something that was initiated on campus, but it was something that affected, something that happened on campus, and there was a HIB investigation that was involved in this incident two years ago. So there was an OCR complaint over that same incident, a Title IX and a Title VI investigation, but we're cooperating with OCR.
So it's not a new situation?
It's not a new situation, no. It's an old situation and again, it involves two students, no faculty or, nothing that happened in school necessarily directly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did I do okay?
That was good.
All right.
Anyone else? Yeah.
I apologize because I'm going to look down so I don't lose my place.
That's fine.
Okay. I stand here for myself and other parents in our district that are extremely disappointed with the lack of communication in our schools. I have a child in middle school and in Washington School. With that said, over the last few years, these situations have become more and more frequent. First and foremost, parental rights is my number one reason and concern. It has become a full-time job having to search and look for all possible events and assemblies and propaganda hidden in our children's classrooms. And with that said, there are some serious concern with this so-called Unity Day that the middle school held. The only information parents were told on paper was simply that, Unity Day, just that, the name in the bulletin, not followed by what exactly was going to be said. When you seek to have an outside organization that is politically funded and biased, because you could go on the website and read everything that's on there and make your decision, speak to our children at a school, it is the parent's right to be notified for an option not to attend. I will not sit here and debate my opinion on the topics that were spoken about for two hours at this assembly. I have every right to an opinion without being judged, attacked, or bullied, which has already happened and also my personal business threatened because of my rights to speak out on behalf of my child. These topics of LGBTQ and gender identity that were taught at the assembly are completely inappropriate in the manner that they were shown. How as educators can you sit here and tell these children, who some may still believe in Santa Claus at 11, in one breath, an entire presentation about women's rights and how far we've come and to protect that? And then in the next presentation, you could be more than two biological genders, which is a scientific fact, regardless of opinion. The school allowing this presentation gives us the right for all the opinions, not just for the LGBTQ community. The argument back will be, we need to provide a safe place for these children in the LGBT community. But that's the funny thing, don't we all live in one community? Why are we separating children from each other and making multiple communities? You try to make these children understand equality, but at the same time, you are the same people who are trying to divide them. When you teach a child that someone is different, that's exactly what they will do, they will treat them different. I would love to see the statistics in our own school on a daily basis where a child who identifies as gay or a different gender actually gets bullied. To my next point, what about the children who have divorced families? What about the children who have autism? What about the children who come from abusive families? What about religious backgrounds that these beliefs give no respect to? If you're going to teach different types of communities, be sure to include all, which I know you will say now was also in that assembly, but the LGBTQ situation's still over when everything else. I'm so sick of hearing this claim of making the community feel comfortable. Where are our academics? I also would love to see statistically where we lie in our state with math and English. We are spending multiple hours in a day in assemblies to learn about gender identity when these children are being pulled out of academic classes. This is exactly why the school did not write a description of who would be coming to talk to our children because they knew there would be backlash. And instead, they shove this rhetoric down our children's throats continuously without our consent. When you are, you are teaching children to be kind because, children need to be taught to be kind no matter what. That does not come with an explanation of their sexual identity or their sexual needs. That is a personal preference you could speak about on your own. If there is an issue with the child in school that is being bullied or bothered by another student, that student should be taken aside and dealt with on their own. Continuously forcing these kids, into these kids' heads that they are the problem of why other children don't feel accepted is absurd. My child does not come to school with the thought that other children need to make her feel comfortable for how her own family chooses to live and her sexual identity. That is a very large responsibility for a child to hold and these children are starting to see it because my own child asked me, you are robbing them of their innocence and I will not stand for it one more day. The public. I'm, I'm not wrapping this up. These are our children's rights. I have one more, I have one more, I have one more minute. The public school system does not have parental rights over our children.
We're well past three minutes, all right?
I want you to know, it's okay, guys.
Excuse me, Christina, I'm going to let you just continue, just one moment, okay? I just want to say something, okay? Everybody is being timed. If you remember in the parameters, it says, if she'd like to continue on, and Christina, we're going to let you finish your thought, you can come back up to address the board after all others who wish to speak on the topic, okay? No one here is being silenced on any side, okay? All children matter to the Board of Education, whatever side you are on right now. And Christina, your time matters just as much as Jordan's mattered, okay? Jordan was given a warning, this is the one-minute warning. Dr. Conklin, please start the one-minute timer.
I want you to know how to, how you expect parents to trust the system when events like this go on. You could also spare the time to explain the other topics that were spoken about because I urge every single one of you to look up the Garden State Equality Organization. They also gave out stickers and water bottles so the children could further check it out at home on their own. Your beliefs and opinions are yours to keep, but facts and academics is what should be in our school and at the very least, this is, it should be your option not to attend. Who approved such an event? That's what I would like to know. And after researching this organization, how could we possibly have them at our school? If another politically biased organization is at this school or around my children again, I will take legal action against this district. The days of parents being scared to speak up for their rights because of backlash from radicals telling us we are bullies are over. They are our children.
Thank you. Okay, you can be next. Okay, do you want to stand there so that you don't get?
Good evening. I'm Mary Lockshin, Central Avenue, West Caldwell. I am going to be referring to a letter that I wrote to Principal Bertolo this afternoon regarding the assembly, the Unity Assembly. Okay. I'm standing today regarding Friday's assembly program in part presented by the Garden State Equality Group. Since we have been opting out of the sexual content in the education standards that were passed in 2020 and implemented in 2022, I believe that parents and guardians should have been given the option to have their children removed from this portion of the assembly. That would be part three. The other two parts were fine. It was obviously well-intended toward unity, however, I agree with the previous speaker that not all points of view and all issues, such as racial issues, were even addressed at this assembly. And the language of DEI and the aggressively leftist group, Garden State Equality, that was hired to present this assembly indicate the political nature of their agenda. So it is a politically biased organization that needs to be investigated rather than hired. I would not recommend hiring them at all. My grandson, for whom I am a legal guardian, and I know many of you on the board, I'm glad you're there, he was quite upset by the content of the third section of this assembly and wished that he could have left. However, students were not allowed to leave when they asked to leave, okay? They were not. And I truly believe that we should have been given a permission slip indicating the content of what was going to be shared. My daughter has opted all of her children out of the health curriculum just to avoid having them exposed to this type of sexual content in the first place. We teach our children, I'm a guardian, my daughter is also partial, we're both partial legal guardians, of the three children, two are in Washington School, one is here in seventh grade. And we teach our children according to our own religious beliefs and ethics to respect and be kind to all children, regardless, all people, and to respect people. So that's, you know, that's a given. And so unfortunately, this kind of seemed like it was kind of snuck in under the, you know, under the guise of unity. Everyone agrees that respect needs to be extended to all students, teachers, and staff of the school community. The issue we have here is that LGBTQ plus and trans agendas are being promoted here and not simply the topic of respect.
Mary, you're so one-minute warning, okay?
Okay, thank you. I'm almost done. As, well, I'm going to just skip that part about the bullying. One of the children did suffer a serious bullying incident last year and the topic of respect is very important to us also for that and other reasons. However, such lifestyles and agendas are diametrically opposed to our deeply-held religious beliefs and our right to remove our children as legal guardians and parents from objectionable material is upheld by our First Amendment rights. Such courtesy was not extended at this assembly, unfortunately. Many parents were upset by this and will most likely, others will make their voices heard as well. So I wanted to let my voice be heard in objection and I recommend putting out a permission slip when this type of sexual content is being promoted in any type of assembly. Parents and legal guardians should have the right to excuse their children from such assemblies. And that's my point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Dillon. I'm at 112 Wharton Road. So I'm pretty much repeating what these last two speakers have just said, but in the future, if we could get a link provided to us of who the speaker is going to be or the group is going to be, I think that would solve a lot of problems because when I looked up what these people represented, and I will share just a couple of them, it honestly, quite frankly, just, I had no words. So how, so one of the links was how are we protected in New Jersey? This one particularly, and if this had Biden and Harris on it, I'd feel equally the same. What a Trump victory means and how are we responding at the moment? So to me, this group is resisting the government and our children should not be spoken to by a group that is promoting resisting the government, no matter who it is. That's it. And two hours were taken away. Two hours. When I was a kid, an assembly was a half hour, 45 minutes at the most. Two hours. It's bad enough that they were home four years ago during COVID and are still probably behind academically. Now we're taking them out, two hours out of the day to listen to a group that promotes resisting, again, the government. It's bad enough that they were home four years ago during COVID and are still probably behind academically. Now we're taking them out, two hours out of the day to listen to a group that promotes resisting, again, the government. Sorry, not happening. That's it. I'm sorry. I'm upset, but thank you very much for listening.
You don't have to apologize. Thank you, Nikki.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Emlo, 22 Dodd Road. I am here to express my gratitude and to emphasize the importance of programs like Unity Day, which was held last Friday at the middle school where I currently have two eighth graders. Events like this foster inclusion and promote a greater understanding of our diverse community, which is crucial, particularly in light of rising concerns about bias and discrimination. Unity Day at GCMS focused on themes of justice, equity, and the value of community partnerships. Topics covered included the historical significance of social justice and music, experiences of underrepresented women in music, the role of law enforcement in fostering safer and more inclusive environments for all. It was great that these conversations were led by community experts and introduced our students to complex social issues while encouraging empathy and an appreciation of diversity. Unfortunately, the need for such programs is urgent and very real. In New Jersey, antisemitic incidents have seen a significant rise. According to new data released by the Anti-Defamation League in April, they reported that antisemitic incidents in 2023 rose by a shocking 103% in New Jersey, reaching a total of 830 incidents, the highest number ever recorded in the state and the third highest number recorded in any state across the country. And this comes after another record-breaking year in 2022, which saw a 10% increase. To break it down even further for people who say that it doesn't happen here, in Essex County alone, there was a 133% increase in antisemitic incidents. And on even more microscopic level, I'm sure that we can all remember the incidents in the not-so-distant past at the middle school where there were antisemitic and homophobic slurs written in the bathrooms. Similarly, incidents of anti-Asian hate crimes have spiked since 2020. And I'm bringing these up because I feel like those parts of the program were also being discussed in the community as not being appropriate for children. And there is a very, very real need for them. New Jersey ranks among the states with the highest reported incidents of these hate crimes, and it makes education about inclusion and acceptance crucial. LGBTQIA youth also face alarming challenges. They are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers due to social stigma, discrimination, and lack of support. According to the Trevor Project, nearly 39% of LGBTQ plus teens in the U.S. seriously considered suicide in the last year. And programs that encourage acceptance and create safe spaces like Unity Day can have a profound impact on these young lives. When LGBTQIA youth have supportive school environments, they report a 40% lower rate of suicide attempts. It is our responsibility as educators and community leaders to ensure that all students feel safe, seen, and valued. Programs like what happened last Friday are not just educational. They are vital interventions that have the power to reduce stigma, prevent violence, and save lives. I want to thank the board and the district for having that program. For those people who are saying that those types of bullying incidents don't happen here, my two daughters have reported within the last two weeks friends of theirs who have been picked on only because of their gender, because of their gender identity. So it is happening here, and programs like this are crucial. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Coro, 18 Eastern Parkway. I am a heterosexual straight woman. I wanted to say that out loud and just pause. And my point is that this Unity Day, while I'm all for unity, teaching kindness for all children, and everyone deserves respect, and we need to accept all children, having two adults stand in front of children and explain their sexual orientation is inappropriate. Me saying my sexual orientation here is inappropriate. We don't talk like that here. We don't talk like that at work. Why do we talk like that in the school? Why do adults, why is it okay for adults to declare their sexual preference in front of children? That's what I have a problem with. Not teaching equal rights for disabilities, race, gender identity, their sexual preference, whatever. No problems with that. But that is where the line gets drawn. I also agree with Mary that there should have been an opt-out option. There should be, even for parents that opt in and appreciate that conversation, to know what was coming home that day, to be able to support that conversation, to be able to field questions or make sure the information was consumed in the right way. Very important because that type of sensitive topic can be perceived in a million different ways by children. So there was no support at home because no one was aware. So I'm glad to hear there'll be transparency. But above and beyond, the idea of having adults share their sexual orientation with children is wrong and should not be allowed. Period.
Anyone else want to come up?
Good evening. Phil Natal, 98 Haffield Street. My concern is, I have a daughter now who's two years old. I'm third generation in Caldwell. My father graduated actually from this building right here because it was the high school at the time. And it's funny, I've seen some teachers here that I had and Mr. Kuleski in the back telling me he's teaching the kids about Constitution. And when I heard about what took place and I had some parents that are friends of mine that reached out and they were concerned, it brought some concern to me. I'd like to have my kids also be in the public school. And I also agree that all children don't deserve to be bullied. All children of any race, ethnicity, beliefs, whichever. However, when you say all children, maybe my children don't believe some of those things when that time comes. Maybe I, as a parent, don't believe some of those things when that time comes. And I think when it comes time to the sexuality and what was kind of expressed, I think us as parents are really just concerned to be able to say what we've heard for so many years, my body, my choice? My child, my choice? That's what it comes down to, is my child, my choice? And we should be able to take them out if we want to, and they should be allowed to leave if they feel uncomfortable. No child, and I mean no child of any belief or whatever they want to do or be, should feel uncomfortable in this situation. And I've been told that these kids were actually held in this Assembly and were not allowed to leave. So my question to you is, and I appreciate you saying that you're going to be more transparent going forward so that the parents that are here concerned can see what the agenda will be. My question is, if you do have something like this, are the students allowed to leave? Because I see students walk off campus for their own beliefs every day when I watch the news. So why wouldn't a student that doesn't believe in something be allowed to walk out and say, may I please be excused? Is that allowed or will that be allowed? Okay, thank you.
So several families have asked that question, and I'll try to make it clear. Let me stop your time because I don't want to interrupt your time.
All good. Now you're good.
So New Jersey parents and guardians can opt out of certain parts of their child's curriculum if it conflicts with their religious, moral, conscientious beliefs, sorry. Parents can opt out of any part of the health, family, and sex education classes if they believe it conflicts with their beliefs. Parents can also opt out of certain science programs, investigations that involve animals, so dissection and other things like that at the high school. But parents cannot opt out of curriculum that promotes diversity, equity, inclusion, and tolerance. This includes instruction on gender, sexual orientation, race, and ethnicity, disabilities, and religious tolerance. However, I'll speak for the middle school. If you look at page 10 of the student handbook, there is an option for having your students have early dismissal. So if, sorry, pardon me. Sorry about that. I'm not speaking into the microphone clearly enough. If parents elect, they can follow early dismissal process that's outlined in the GCMS handbook. So that's up to you. That's your choice.
But my question is, is if.
Don't yell from the audience, please. You can get up and address the.
My question is, if I speak to my children before they start coming to the school and before they start getting put into this situation, and I tell my child, if you're put in this situation, you feel uncomfortable, you text me right away, you let me know, and you walk out of that Assembly, do they have the freedom to walk out of that Assembly?
If you scheduled a time for early dismissal as part of the student handbook, yes.
So I have to schedule it?
Can a student merely just walk out of a class?
Correct. That's my question.
No, they cannot do that. No student could just walk out of a class.
All right. Now you answered my question. That's perfect.
They'd be violating the code of conduct.
No, I get what you're saying. So what I'm saying is, what took place here, the kids, when they were in, if they wanted to leave, they have no option to leave.
As far as I'm concerned, no students, as far as from the administration or the teachers, ask to leave. If they felt they wanted to leave and didn't want to ask, I can't speak to that. But no student to any of the staff or any of the administration asks to leave that meeting.
No students asked to leave the meeting, is what you're saying?
And no student asked to leave any of the presentations.
Okay. Yeah, that's not what I heard from some parents.
Well, I can't speak to what you heard, sir. I can only tell you what I know.
If they did ask, would you allow them to leave?
If they did ask to leave, why would they be allowed to leave?
Because they feel uncomfortable.
No, please don't answer from the audience. This is between Mr. Natali and the superintendent.
Like, if they feel uncomfortable, can they leave? I mean, you're putting a kid in an uncomfortable situation. If that kid feels uncomfortable.
I'm not putting any student in any place. We provided.
No, I'm not saying you are. But I'm saying if the kid is put in an uncomfortable situation, can they leave?
If they expressed concern and they were upset, and of course, they would be allowed to leave. If they were upset and said, I'm not comfortable sitting in this room, of course, they'd be allowed to leave.
That's what I wanted on the record. Thank you.
Why wouldn't they be? Any student that expressed that concern.
That's not how it was coming off. That's what my question was. Because some of the parents said that the kids were asking to leave, and they were told they couldn't.
Again, sorry, I can't say this enough. According to the teachers, according to the administration, no student expressed their desire to leave any of the presentations. If a student was upset and was clearly upset and expressed their upsetness, of course, any adult in that situation would remove that student from where they were being upset, whatever that reason was.
So when that time comes for my kids to decide if I'm going to put them in public or private school, I have an answer for you, saying if they feel uncomfortable, they are allowed to leave.
Again, if they expressed concern to an adult in that room and said, I'm not comfortable with what's being presented here. I'd like to excuse myself.
Yes.
Why wouldn't any adult say, okay, I'll talk to you about it?
That's all I needed an answer on.
That makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
Hi, Teresa Cardy, 23 Cleveland. I was wondering, when choosing a group on Unity, did anybody look up this group and see how much division there is on the first page? This group says, post-election update, what a Trump's victory means. This is bad. This is really bad. That's right there showing division, not unity. Are we looking at all children at a whole? I mean, we have children that come from broken homes, family members with addictions, one-parent households. They've been bullied for decades and decades, but we've never really considered and talked about this, right? My daughter eats lunch at school alone and is having issues making friends. And I went and spoke to the teacher, and she said she didn't know how to handle some of the things my daughter says. But I wasn't made aware of that until I saw a picture sent home from another parent that she was alone. So why aren't we worrying about the kids that aren't maybe LGBTQ? And the other children that are having issues in the school? Why isn't that a topic for discussion? Why are we bringing in groups that are talking about division instead of unity? Why is this happening in our schools? What is the purpose? And I think that we deserve answers. We deserve answers. My daughter is having issues in school. And whether she's bullied or not, you know, kids are confused. It's a confusing time all around, right? I think we're just adding to the confusion. We're just adding to the confusion by making it a big deal and dividing. Like, if we weren't making such a big deal and dividing, this wouldn't be going on. We wouldn't be having these meetings, you know? You know, I have clients that are sitting in their car and parking lots at my building saying they're going to kill themselves because of our president. This is our President of the United States, which we should respect, our President of the United States. Whether we are left, right, doesn't matter. This is the president. So we're now putting out there, these kids want to kill themselves. They're transgender because of what's being told on social media. And this group that you brought into the school. I mean, this is part of the group. This is what they're saying. This is bad. This is really bad. They're telling my cousin, who's transgender, not to see her family for Thanksgiving because they hate her, because they voted for Trump. This is sick stuff going on, guys. I literally, I'm going to have suicides in my buildings because they're transgender. And this is what they're being told by groups like this, that they're not loved, they're not liked, and there's division. We're feeding into that division. And we're not focusing on the kids that are being bullied and neglected in other areas because we're so focused on this one area, it's all going to there. How about here? How about here? Why aren't we doing that? I just don't understand where our heads are and why we're believing and feeding into this stuff. Like, there's an agenda here. Do we not see that? I don't know. Maybe it's time for me to go to private school. I heard that a lot in the groups. A lot of bullying going on. I love living in the Caldwell's, too. A lot of bullying going on. But it's all good because I can handle it. Come at me.
Oh, I'm going to let this gentleman, if you want to just be on deck.
My name is Gregory Quinlan. I'm the president of the Center for Garden State Families. We're located in Persippany. I was alerted to this by several parents in the district, and I was asked to come and speak. I speak to this uniquely as someone who lived the gay lifestyle for a decade of my life. My gender identity is ex-gay, and my pronouns are biologic. The reason why I'm here is to discuss what happened. And it looks to me, and this is, I'm actually parroting some of the things that I've been told by parents. This was better to ask for forgiveness than to get permission. And that's what this looks like with your Unity Assembly. So this is the deception that the parents feel, and I don't blame them. Would it be any different if you had me as an ex-gay come and speak to the students? And those who affirm the LGBTQ identities, they would be very upset that you didn't let them know that I was being there or what group was being represented. They would have every right to do so, just as much as these parents do. They have been betrayed by this board and the administration. Period. They have been. I want to address some of the other things, too. When you start hearing these statistics, you really need to know who did the study, where the study came from, what the parameters were, and can the study be replicated? That's called science. It's not science until it is replicated. Because there are no replicated scientific studies supporting any specific biologic ideology for anything with the LGBTQIA agenda. None. As somebody who lived that life for a decade, that was in the 80s. I watched 100 of my friends and acquaintances die of AIDS before I quit counting. I was an AIDS nurse. So I know what the lifestyle is about, at least what it was from my experience. I see it now because many people still choose to leave, usually done as adults. But we are indoctrinating, we are inculcating ideas into children's heads that they shouldn't be having when they really should be learning how to read, write cursive, understand scientific principles, understand our history, our constitution. But instead, they're getting this. Parents have been disrespected. The community has been disrespected. Every person in the community has been disrespected by the way this was handled. I lobby in Trenton and in Washington, D.C. I've had direct contact with Garden State Equality, and I can tell you, those who demand tolerance the most possess it the least. This is not an organization who should be talking on the topic. If you wanted that topic, then bring in a psychologist or a psychiatrist who is gay-affirming. Not that organization. Thank you.
Louis Galliano, 550 Bloom for the Ave. First, I'd like to say I'm so glad that he spoke first. He just read my speech, okay? So the funny thing is, you know, I only found out about this about an hour ago. And my daughter is actually one of the children who called me. and my daughter is actually one of the children who called me crying from the bathroom, telling me, "Come pick me up now." Because she was given no notice that this was happening. Now, I'm going to read you a little something that I had prepared from another time, about two years ago, when I had a meet at Washington School, when they were beginning to start this curriculum. I sat in a room with Mr. Conklin, who tried to convince us that all this was great and wonderful, while he showed us books, that they were going to show to 5th graders, teaching kids that when they're stressed, they should go home and masturbate. That's who's sitting up here now. I don't normally do this, but I feel called to do so with every ounce of my being. For anyone that knows me, it is painstakingly clear that my daughter is all that matters. However, that doesn't stop there for me, as I am an advocate for all children, many of them without a voice. That being said, what is currently taking place in our school district, as well as across the country, is abhorrent. Not only do we have a crumbling education system, completely failing the children at every level, where the district, state, and national test scores reflect that less than 1/3 of our children are proficient at anything, but now they are outright being attacked as well. School is a place for continuing education, period. That's right, period. It is not a social experiment or a place to cultivate a potential voter pool, however, that is what it has become. I send my child to school to learn math, science, history, and language arts, music, art, and receive some physical training. However, I fail to see the correlation between the vulgar and inappropriate new curriculum being forced upon these tender-aged children and their continuing education. I fail to see the correlation, because it simply does not exist. This is predatory, premeditated, manipulative, institutionalizing, and brainwashing of young, vulnerable minds. It's unacceptable. Yet, the problem does not begin and end with the nefarious authorities imposing their inequitous doctrine on these children. It begins and ends with you and me, the people here. Throughout this week, well, this don't matter anymore. So basically, first of all, he said it best. The problem here is that no notice was given. You lied and deceived the soul. You mentioned several other assemblies that you've had this year. I've received a notice for every one of them, very detailed, tells you everything about what they were about. For some reason, this one just said "Unity," right? When I called the school, as my daughter said, "Come pick me up," I didn't just take her word, I called the office, said, "Is there an assembly?" "Yes, what time does it begin?" "1:00 PM." "Will there be any schoolwork done after it?" "No." "Okay, what is this assembly about?" "Unity, sir." "What does that mean?" Refused to give me an answer. "Okay, I'll be there right now to pick up my daughter." When I came to pick up my daughter, there was dozens of parents lined up already here, waiting to pick their children up. It looked like 8:30 in the morning, like they were here to drop them off, alright? This is wrong. The main point that he made, that I don't think any of you are getting here, is that my kid comes to school to further her education, right? You know, I have lots of beliefs, right? That you may not agree with, that maybe no one agrees with. I teach them to my daughter at home, because that's my personal right. That's her personal business, right? And some of them, you know, you can't talk about God in the schools anymore. You know, you have a handbook that says little boys can't wear a baseball hat, you know, a Yankees hat. I don't think that's offensive to anyone, but apparently, it's distracting to other students. Little girls can't wear halter tops. I have no problems with these rules. But for some reason, other children can walk around with bunny ears, masks, and a tail on it. And they get a special bathroom, an extra time in it to take off their tail. Meanwhile, my daughter's being timed, she's got five minutes to run back to the bathroom, right? My daughter's 12-years-old, she has her period now. You know, this is not really something I really want to discuss with you guys, but, you know, she goes to the bathroom, and there's no receptacles inside them. You know, these kids, you don't even have the proper things available for these children, but you're spending money to have people come here and teach their children this garbage? That's it, thank you.
Anyone else want to come up? Sure.
Hi, Dan Berticini, 43 Ivy Road, Caldwell, New Jersey. I just want to say to the board, since a lot has been said here, that's quite frankly, mind-boggling to me. It sounds like it's mind-boggling to a lot of people on both sides. But I just hope and trust that the Board of Education will base whatever decisions come out of this meeting and future meetings on facts, and on grounded information, and on people who are actually in our community. I don't even know who the second-to-last speaker was. It didn't sound like they were actually living here. So for all these people talking about propaganda and agendas, clearly, that person had one. You know, it's really shocking to me, just what's really revealed by a lot of the comments here, which is, and I totally agree about parents being informed. I don't think anybody in this community on the board would disagree with that. Parents should be informed about what's happening, absolutely. And so, to the extent that there's a gripe on one side, that there's not enough information being provided before some programs are being provided, all for it, you know? Give more information ahead of time. I don't think anybody is upset with that. But I think what some of the comments really reveal here is that the gripe is not about the information not being provided about programs ahead of time. It's about the specific content that some people believe about this one program, which quite frankly, my child didn't describe it anyway, like that whatsoever. So it's completely different than what I heard. And I think a lot of people are running with some beliefs of their own, quite frankly, that they're amplifying, when the program had nothing to do with that whatsoever. And if you look at the names of the houses in this middle school, knowledge, endurance, leadership, courage, integrity, respect, citizenship, responsibility, a program that was talking about how people in our community who have been traditionally, historically, statistically marginalized for a long time, how they can feel safe and secure in their own community. What part of that program do you find issue with? And which value that our houses represent, does that not reflect? So, and to the people who are saying that they feel like their communities are not represented. Well, let's represent them too! You're talking about people, that's an argument for more inclusion, and making information about more communities, socio-economic, whatever it is, all for it. But just because we're representing the values of a statistically marginalized part of our community, does not mean that we're excluding or saying anything else about any other part. And I think we just have to have a little bit of common sense, and just to the board, please, just base it on information, statistics, common sense, and not some, you know, ridiculous, you know, concerns that you're hearing from people that I don't even think are a part of our community.
Jill Schuler, 57 Park Street. I have two children in 6th grade, who just started, and they love the school, they love their teachers, they love the staff. So I'm here to sort of just go down my instincts, my feelings, when I started to hear that people were so up in arms about this. I have a queer daughter who attends this school. Let me first say, to all of you who are upset over the Unity Day event that happened last Friday at Grover Cleveland Middle School, there is no gay agenda. There is no conspiracy, no indoctrination, no conversion. This is not a cult to flip your kids. All that this is about is cultivating good citizenship in our children. Teaching them to be kind people, to be caring towards their neighbors, all of us. To be helpful, not to be judgmental, to be accepting, to not think of people different than them as less than, and deserving anything less than the rights that the rest of us enjoy. This includes LGBTQ community, and yes, why doesn't it include everybody else? We've talked about children of divorced parents, of course, it shouldn't include all of these people. But this is just one topic, because they've been so marginalized over the years. Think about it, do you really think that these adults who lead our schools with care and empathy are actually trying to convert your child into being gay?
Please, please don't, please, wait, wait. Please, I asked at the beginning for decorum, there is a child in the room, okay? I don't want things from the peanut gallery. The board is being patient and respectful to everyone at this mic. I expect everyone in this room to do the same. Everybody else who was up here got that same amount of respect. We will give respect in this board meeting, or I will adjourn it.
Thank you. Okay, where was I?
Dr. Conklin, please restart, Jill, excuse me. Dr. Conklin, please restart the timer.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Because now I can't, now I don't know where to go back from, Jill, so I'm sorry.
I stopped it when-
So I guess what I'm saying is, do you really think this? That there is like some cult, some movement to convert kids? Can you hear yourselves? Do you realize how ridiculously obnoxious, not obnoxious, sorry, just how paranoid that sounds? This assembly had good members of the community share what they are doing to cultivate a global community to be more safe. To cultivate a local and global community to be more safe, more open to dialogue, and more inclusive, that's it. The sheriff's office had a representative leaving the discussion, for God's sake. That should be reassuming to you naysayers. There are many of us here, mothers, other families of kids that we know, who have been like, "Thank God they did this, this is what's needed." Because not accepting, not acknowledging people, and yes, kids, who are part of the LGBTQ community, not acknowledging them harms them. We hear stories of it more and more. Bullying and violence abounds. Do you think our beloved and precious children deserve this treatment? Events like this special assembly are happening more and more across the country in an attempt to cultivate empathy in our kids. That's it. Why do you have a problem with something so basic to being a human being? Let's keep these people safe, and leave them with the feeling that they are part of the community, and that they are seen, and that they are safe. To quote our principal in his letter that was sent to all over the weekend, he said, "Through real-life examples." They discussed how law enforcement are allies in standing up against discrimination and hate crimes. While also highlighting the importance of LGBTQ rights in our presentation. Their goal was to show how acknowledging the harm that has been caused to these kids. My best friend lost her transgender son to suicide last year.
Jill?
Yep, we've got one more thing. What the assembly did not do was try to convert your kids. There was no goal here of teaching your kids to be gay, no gay agenda. It's a ridiculously paranoid attitude to have. Why are you so afraid of this?
I just want to clear a couple of things up first.
Sure, just before, you can, please stay up there.
I went through your timer. There were three sessions. There was one called "Singing for Change." There was another one, "Connecting Global Literature: Primary Sources Documentation." Those two programs were both run by professors I called the university, and the last one was called "Justice Through Partnerships." And it included a corrections officer from Monmouth County Sheriff's Office, who partnered with someone from the Garden State Equality Group. And the presentation was designed to really explore the vital roles of law enforcement, and the roles that they play in ensuring the safety of all communities. They promoted dialogue, empathy, and mutual respect, to create a safer and more inclusive environment for everyone. They did touch on the history of the LGBTQ+ involvement in law enforcement. They did touch on the, sorry, I keep forgetting. They did touch on the LGBTQ+ rights, in terms of historical facts, but it wasn't anything to do with specifically addressing LGBTQ+I community, or anything along those lines. It was really about community partnerships, and making sure everyone feels valued and accepted, and understands that they can go to the law enforcement if they felt there was bias against them. That's what was designed to do. So if there's a message in the community that isn't that, then it's not the message that people should be adhering. I just wanted to clear that up, because it seems like that's the biggest misunderstanding.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, I'm a little nervous and conflict-averse, but I just wanted to share, Avi Berticini, 43 Ivy Road. I just want to share my experience of the one assembly I remember from 13 years in New Jersey public schools. I was in 8th grade in 1993. I have no clue if my parents were notified in advance. And by the way, my parents were open with me about, like, safe sex, right? This is the height of the AIDS epidemic, things like that. The one assembly I remember from my entire schooling was that we had a young man come talk to us who had full-blown AIDS. He contracted it in high school. He lived his life kind of like a frat boy, I guess you could say. I remember this so well. And when he got out of high school, him and his friends were just happy, nobody got pregnant. And he later found out that he was HIV-positive. And his story, he is long-dead, I'm sure, impacted me so much. More than any safe-sex conversations I had with my parents, who were open, more than any whatever sexual health education or puberty education I may have had in school. I was so moved by him, that I'm 44 now, and I remember this, from when I was 13. And he impacted me, and my understanding of how I could keep myself safe. So these assemblies matter. School is not just reading, writing, math, et cetera. Children who are bullied have a harder time learning those things, because they are defensive, and they are scared to come to school. Our daughter was bullied so horrifically in 5th grade, she's now a 7th grader. Her school initially told us to do a hip, and then walked back on it, because they were worried that she would be bullied for putting out a hip. She was not bullied for sexuality, but it turned our lives upside down. She was scared to come to school. She didn't know who she would eat lunch with, and at that age, that is so important. And that affects you, because you go back to that classroom feeling isolated and unwanted in your community, and that matters. So teaching these kids that they matter, regardless of something that others will look down at them for, is something we should be celebrating. And I know these parents are saying, "I just wanted to be notified," and I don't expect an answer, because it's none of my business. But I'm wondering if you wanted to be notified because you want to know more about what's happening in your school? Or because you would immediately take your kid out, because you don't want them to hear this message? And I just don't understand why.
One minute, one minute warning.
I think I'm done, though.
One more clarification, I forgot to mention this before. Each session was 30 minutes long. I know someone said two hours, but each session was 30 minutes long.
Mike, I know you had a referendum thing, I mean, we can always go back and continue to talk on it.
I kind of think I'm going to put that off till next meeting, but I do want to say this, because I didn't come here for this. So everybody knows that I came here for, you know, just to address the board about a couple of issues. And wow, okay, that's what I have to say. I do have to commend the board, I really do. I have to say what's good and when it's good, right? This board listens, there's no doubt. Miss Crosswell, I'm a little afraid of you, but, you know, I'll get over it. You do a great job of commanding, you know, but you're very attentive to what people think. I'm a middle-of-the-ground guy, I'm an educator, but I'm also a parent, and we run a Christian household. So, you know, I see both sides of this. And what I get out of this is what I've seen for years. We're a divided country, we're a divided people, and we can't be that way anymore. We really can't. We have to see each other's side. We just have to see, we have to get into better communication, board. That's the only thing I have to say from this, is the communication probably wasn't as well as it should be. And as a parent, I should have total choice of what I want my children to learn, and what I don't want them to learn, and when I want them to learn it. So if you can't see that, the one side, you need to pay attention to that. You need to respect how people feel on that. And then on the other side, we do have kids that are marginalized. I'm an educator, we do have kids that are bullied, we do have kids that are in certain situations, that are trying to find out who they are in- situations, that are trying to find out who they are and this and that. And we have to understand that part, too. And I think that that's where we've come to, and it's really like uneducational, I guess is the best way I can say that, is because if we're an educated community, we have to understand that there are differences, okay? And we have to open our minds and our hearts to both sides, even if you don't agree. That's fine, you don't have to agree, but you have to understand that other side. And we've become so political, so political, that it's like we can't get past the politics. And this isn't political. I understand what you're doing, Board of Education, I get it, because I'm an educator. But I definitely agree with the part of, you need to let parents know what's going on. Again, you know, they don't know. Should they look at the agendas or the calendar, great, but they should know, because we do have to be able to parent our own children, and we do want, we might want to teach our child about a certain thing, but not right now. Right? Maybe later on, maybe in a couple years, or two years, or three years. And the way we want to present it to them, not the way we want education to. And that's been, and as an educator, I'm telling you, that's how education has come over the past 10 years, is where the government is telling us what our kids should learn and how we should learn it, and that should never be. We're a great community, and I will agree on that, this is a good community. And this community needs to be able to parent their own children, but we also need to listen to both sides. And again, I commend you guys, I think you did a great job. I've been leading my teachers' association for 20 years now, and I've never come across a board that's that attentive, that's willing to listen, that wants the respect in the room. Kudos to you guys, you're doing a great job, and thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah, and Joan, come back behind Taryn, so you'll be next. Taryn, go ahead. It's fine, you don't have to be really quick, Taryn.
Hi, I'm Taryn Kaufman, 35, Marshall Street. Just speaking to a couple of parents, it has come to my attention that the memo that was sent out by Mr. Bertolo on Friday cited that we were told about it on the, when was it, November 6th email. However, I don't think that email was ever sent out, because I know personally I did not get it, and I've spoken to many parents that have said that they did not receive the November 6th email. So I just wanted to let the board know that while an attempt sounds like it was made, I don't think it reached all the parents or any parents. Because it was like that, you know, right before teacher convention, and everybody was excited, because a four-day weekend was coming, so get out of Dodge. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Taryn. Joan?
Hi, everybody, this is Joan Hillman, I live at 58 Small. And yeah, thank you, I wanted to also say you guys are great, I mean, as a team, I don't always attend meetings, but I do watch them, and I appreciate the support and all that you've done. And actually, I wanted to first begin with seeing the Unity Day, sounds like a great day. I mean, my son doesn't go to school, he's actually in the high school at this point, but I only just heard a little bit about the Unity Day, and I got very upset when I heard about Garden State Equality coming, because I know I've done a lot of research in the past, and I shared that with Dr. Heineck back in 2020, and I just was very alarmed. But then I went through the slides, and I saw that there was, that Colby University was here, and there was all these other aspects of the Unity Day, and as Dr. Conklin keeps mentioning, the other phases of it. So for that, I'm grateful that that's occurring. As for having Garden State Equality, I guess one thing is, who selected that vendor?
So, the state of New Jersey recognizes the Garden State Equality as one of New Jersey's largest advocacy and educational organizations.
I'm sorry, could you go a little slower?
Sorry. Sorry, I'm trying to read from my notes here, I want to be clear that I don't misspeak. The state of New Jersey, government of New Jersey, recognizes the Garden State Equality is New Jersey's largest advocacy and educational organization.
Wait, could you slow down a little bit? I'm sorry, it's the, go ahead.
The state of New Jersey recognizes the Garden State Equality as New Jersey's largest advocacy and educational organization that support LGBTQ I plus rights as well. The state of New Jersey recognizes the Garden State Equality can help deal with bullying, all forms of discrimination, school safety, and legislative advocacy initiatives, which is why we called upon them to help us with this important assembly.
Okay, so-
I, me. You're welcome. I did. So if anybody has a concern, my email's right on the website, feel free to send me an email.
Thank you for sharing that. I actually had spent many hours, many, many hours, speaking about Garden State Equality with Dr. Heineck. I don't know if his information gets passed on to you?
I don't have any information from Dr. Heineck about the Garden State Equality.
Or anybody in that office? I don't know. Okay, well, I'll take that off topic, but we've spent a lot of time in discussion back in 2020, so it's kind of disappointing, and that's why I was bringing it up. But again, I'm very sorry for anybody who's been bullied in any cases, in any deaths that occurred, and I believe that we all have a right to be who we are. But again, as a parent of a child, I think that, you know, the parents needed to be notified, and that not doing so stripped them of their First Amendment rights to religious liberty, and it's against our God-given rights. And I just, I don't want that to happen at the high school, and I don't want that to happen at any of the other schools. And again, maybe have it something at nighttime, and invite the parents to come or something, if you want to do that, yeah, just an idea.
Thanks, Joan.
And actually, the other thing, I want to learn more about that HIB policy, too. Thanks for being there.
Yeah, and we are going to be looking at that again, Joan, too, so.
Hi.
Hi, Jess.
Hi. You know me well. Jessica Crown, 183 Forest Ave., West Caldwell. I was speaking here in 2020 about the health curriculum. I think the issue that I have with this particular scenario is that it's yet again, not just the kids reporting it when they come home, not reporting it, but discussing it when they get home, not being prepared for the conversation. It required, yet again, parental oversight of the board and the Caldwell-West Caldwell District Administration, okay? With the 2020 health curriculum, it took me to stand up here at Harrison to let you know what the content was in one of the YouTube videos that was completely politicized. And right after that meeting, the video was immediately taken down. The entire curriculum was taken down, so that nobody would see it. This was hidden into the principal's bulletin on November 6th. And while Taryn and I sit next to each other on the same, not side, but in agreement with our issues with this, because I think we need to have a collective conversation, I think that these kids are teaching us more in this situation than it's really been a roadblock for the past however many years. We all need to start talking to each other. It's completely out of control, but it should not take the parents to research Garden State Equality and come across a website that is a completely activist website, okay? I do, we teach our children kindness extends to everybody, there is no label. It should, that should be across the board in this entire room. And if it's not, that's the real problem. So while I walked in here on one side of the room, listening to everybody, I get all sides. It's not about having a side, it's about having common sense, I do agree with common sense. Common sense, parents need to be informed, parents need to be able to make that decision. My daughter, who is very shy, has anxiety, okay? She's not going to stand up to a teacher and say, "Can I excuse myself, I'm not comfortable." Okay? There is not one child, there is not one parent, adult, in this room that is lesser than the other, or greater than the other. We need to just, unity, yes. This has divided in so many different ways, and it needs to change. I would love to see Unity Day speak to the human level. Why are we calling out specific groups? It is not about that. These children are all, I say, when I talk about my children, I have two daughters, one is in fifth grade, and one is in eighth grade. They are both uniquely individual. They have their wonderful, amazing characteristics. Celebrate it. It has nothing to do with them being girls, it has nothing to do with them being Catholic, it has nothing to do with them going to private school or public school, it has nothing to do with me, their father, any of you, it's them. And that's where the focus needs to be. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Joan, come on.
So, one thing I just want, do I have to say my name again?
No.
Okay. And one thing that I just keep hearing is that, like, kids don't notice differences, or there shouldn't be differences. But I think anybody who is familiar with the baby doll study of how children are, when kids, there's a study that was done of children that were handed baby dolls of different races. And they were chosen whether they wanted to keep that baby doll, or discard that baby doll. And I think many of us who have been in Psych 101, or in any kind of child development class, we've seen this study. Children before the age of three, around the age of three or four, start choosing the doll that has the lighter colored skin, because they understand that we as a society do make choices and treat people differently, by the age of three. Most kids start to understand their sexuality in elementary school. Now, we might not know, we might not see it in them, but they're starting to understand that, right? So I think oftentimes, we're really, we're doing our kids such a disservice by not allowing them to figure out who they are. We want them to be what we want them to be. But guess what? We don't get to choose for them, just like our parents didn't get to choose for us. And I just think that, like, this idea that kids don't know who they are is like, we really just need to pause and look, again, look at the data, right? Look at the scientific data that shows us that kids are making these choices, they understand, and get out of their way.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone-
Yeah, I do. I do. So I completely, Teresa Cardi, again, I completely agree with you. They have to make their own decisions, and they should be able to, especially if they can make their own decisions at this age, when it's so confusing about their sexual orientation, then I'm going to come to the school, and I'm going to bring a big locker full of all different religions and Bibles, and I'm going to teach all the kids about Allah, about Muslims, about Judaism, about Catholic, about Jesus, all of the religion. Let them make this decision. I'm not going to get arrested by the police officer, right? That's not going to happen? I can do that, right? I can go to all the schools and do that?
Are you asking, can you enter the school without permission?
No, no, no. No, I know I can't. I know I can't, don't worry. I know you're looking at him, don't worry, I'm not coming in your school. I'm going to sit outside, and I'm going to gravitate with signs, all the kids to come up, and I'm going to hold little committees outside and teach them about different religions. Because at that age, they should be able to choose the religion that they want to be in, wouldn't you agree?
If you do that off-school property, you can-
Good, I'm going to do that, and then I'm also going to talk to them, see, I'm also- I'm also certified in drug and alcohol counseling, so I'm going to also do that. I'm going to talk to them about heroin, what happens when you start smoking pot and drinking alcohol, and becoming a heroin addict, and then becoming a prostitute, and prostitution. Why not just let these kids know everything that's going on and take away their fucking innocence? I mean, that's what we're doing.
If you could please watch your language, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, cursed, I apologize. Absolutely, and I get very overwhelmed when it comes to this conversation, because our rights are being taken away. Our rights are being taken away. There are some things that I don't want my children to hear about. We discuss it at home. We discuss it at home. There's a place, there's a time and place for everything, a time and a place, and I choose to discuss those things with my children at home. My children just asked me, "How come AR carries a purse, he's my assistant?" He's gay. He put a video on for you guys, he wanted to share it with you. I mean, this is not, he's a gay man who grew up, he's 24 years old, grew up in society as a gay man, and had to go through this. You know, this is, you're giving them a right to choose at such a young age, and teaching them in elementary school and middle schools, well, then they should be able to choose their religion. And we shouldn't judge, right? We shouldn't judge the way I feel, we don't judge the way that other people feel, but we're writing down notes to each other, passing them back and forth, right?
Okay, Taryn, thank you.
Hi, Taryn Leganegro, 71, Small. First of all, I just wanted to say that there's a Bible study club at the middle school, there is, I've never heard of a club being turned down from students who bring an idea, so there is a space for everybody. And I also think that sometimes we need to recognize our own privilege, that we don't have a child that needs to be seen in something that they're watching, in a program, and whether that's race, whether that's sexuality, whether that's disability, whatever that is, I think that it's important that if it's one child in the room who can feel seen by that programming, I think that it's worth it. So I just wanted to, that's it, say that I fully support there being programs like this, and to, for everybody, and clubs for everybody, and whoever wants to have community deserves community. Thank you.
Diana Reyes, Spanish teacher at the middle school. I just want to reiterate something that Dr. Conklin said in regards to the assembly. The assembly was, the one in question was maybe half an hour to maybe 40 minutes, by the time the students moved, because they were in the cafeteria, they were in the gym, and they were in the auditorium, so there was movement. For those, I was in the, with all the students, I was with the eighth graders, when they were in with the one in question, the only thing that happened there, yes, they said their sexuality, they would say they were two gay men, but their conversation was about the unity that they have now with the police department, and how it's so much better for them now to be able to be, have a liaison, to be able to go to someone if there is any type of bullying by a person to, the law enforcement is there to help them. That is all that went on. There was nothing else that went on, other than them saying, "Yes, we are two gay men, but we have a much better relationship with the police now than we ever had." They talked about history, and that was it. Nothing else happened. If any student asked to leave, and you say that your child is shy, they might not have. There's not a teacher that has said, "No, you have to stay here." As far as I know, in the eighth grade, none of the students, they asked questions, there were no water bottles that were given out, the only time they got a sticker is when they asked a question, they gave them a sticker. That was it, that's all that happened. So nothing else happened in regards to telling them anything. They just said, "I am a gay man, and this is the history of what had happened," Stonewall, they talked about that, and they talked about how better, we had a correctional officer there, and he said how better the relationship is now, because it's more open, people are willing to ask questions, people are willing to speak. That was it, nothing else. And that was maybe half an hour, and if there was any student that felt uncomfortable, if they asked a teacher, we would send them to guidance. In regards to other subjects, we had advisory, advisory that happens once, twice a month, in which we discuss different subjects. We have discussed suicide, we have discussed family life, we have discussed, you know, being responsible, being caring, being kind. So all these, there's thousands of topics that cannot be condensed into one assembly. We spread them out, and we spread them out in advisory. So just putting that out there, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Helen Antoniu McGowan, I'm at 29 Bowers Road, Caldwell, and I apologize for being late. I just walked in, and I'm sure I missed a lot of the comments, but I'm here today because I worked with Mr. Bertolo in my capacity at Caldwell University to help bring this programming to GCMS. And I want to applaud his efforts for bringing this programming to the middle school. And really, I watched all three sessions. I traveled with the seventh graders along with one of my colleagues, I watched the two sessions that were run by Caldwell University professors, and quite frankly, they did not talk about anything that your students are not already hearing in their ELA classes, books they've already read, history lessons that they've already learned about the civil rights movement, the music, I mean, this is nothing that was that, I think people's imaginations are going, running a little bit wild. That third session, run by Garden State Equality, again, was a beautiful session, I saw your students being so engaged-
It was, and I was a little bit nervous looking at the students, and they were in it. They were raising their hands, asking good questions. At the end of the short half-hour session, there were still a bunch of students that had their hands up, that had really good questions. I think this conversation needs to continue. The idea is that, you know, we want to show students that there are resources here, that you, we want you to feel safe, and I think that those gentlemen really did a wonderful job, and I applaud, again, Mr. Bertolo's efforts, and I hope we continue this programming. I am, you know, in my capacity at Caldwell University, we do these things all the time, and I promise you, this was middle school appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Sherri Fryer, 1 Ellis Road. I wasn't going to speak, but my daughter came home upset and uncomfortable, and I had said to her, "Why didn't you just ask to leave?" So anyone who's saying that the children were allowed, 100% not true, because she asked twice to leave because she felt uncomfortable, and they said, "No one is allowed to leave," twice. And then she said, "I feel trapped." So we're so concerned about making certain students feel comfortable, what about the other ones? And honestly, I have no problem with the presentation left in the dark. Nothing. Nothing. I had no idea what was going on. The parents weren't notified, and I think that's what the main issue is. Now, whether, who, whatever you want to take your children out, that's no one's business but mine and her father's. It doesn't matter. And if you want to keep your children in, not our business. I think we're losing the point of it. But she wanted to leave because she felt uncomfortable, and she did ask, and they said, "No one is allowed to leave." Now, I'm assuming because they probably thought it was disrespectful, which I can completely understand, but at the same time, she came home uncomfortable and said she felt trapped, and that is not okay.
Before I leave, I just, I'm so happy that a teacher spoke, or maybe two teachers, I was not sure if the other one that worked with Mr. Bertolo is still a teacher, because you just proved our exact point, that not all children and parents matter. You're sitting here trying to promise us, us, because we have to be labeled, the people that want parental rights, that what was taught was not this, it was not that, it doesn't matter what was taught. Those are our rights, and then to have teachers who suppose, supposedly are supposed to be for all children, tend to pull to this one side, that's where the divide comes in. I mean, it was just proved in front of all our faces. So it's really sad because it seems like a little bit of a dead end, and really only one side does matter, but I'm happy that that happened because that just truly showed a lot of true colors to where the faculty obviously stands and that we're not going to have any backing. So it's really sad, but thank you for your time.
Liz?
Good evening. Liz Hart, 149 Ravine Ave. I actually wanted to read an email that I had sent to the board and Dr. Conklin because I had previous engagement, and I didn't think I was going to make it in time. But I just wanted to say that while I no longer have a student at GCMS, I'm writing you this email in support of the efforts put into this assembly to truly embody the district's mission statement to foster, inspire, and champion learning for all. I served as a parent volunteer on the Comprehensive Equity Plan Committee, and then more specifically on the School Climate Committee while my son was a student at GCMS. I volunteered on these committees to immerse and educate myself on their intergoings-on of the school and the efforts of the teachers and administration, and the effort, excuse me, the teachers and administration were taking to create a more inclusive environment for all students. Nothing makes me happier than to see that an assembly like this took place, especially during this ongoing divisive political environment which has seeped into our schools and broader community. We need more assemblies like this to show that the marginalized persons of the past, present, and future deserve space in our schools, in our small town, and across the world. I actually wonder if something like this could be presented at the high school, so that way all of our students could be privy to all of this information. And I do want to share that there are opportunities, if you reach out to the board and to the district and the administration, to learn more about what is going on with the school and how they're teaching and with your students. I have done it as a single parent in this community, and I've done it throughout all the years that my child has been here, so there are opportunities for you to come and make a difference and to understand what is going on versus coming here and being reactive. I come to every single board meeting, okay? So it's great to see people are here now when there's all this hoopla, but I think it would be better if everyone could come more often, right? And just to be a part of the communication, of the conversation instead of reacting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want to make sure everyone has their opportunity to speak. Oh, Teresa. Sure, that's okay. Teresa, that's all right. Come on up.
Hi, Teresa Hunt, 72 Forest Ave. I'm just gonna, I'm a little, there we go. Yeah, so I'll keep it really brief. I just want to echo what Liz said. I also have a student at the high school. Her name is Lucy Sandor. I have one in the elementary school at Lincoln, and I'm also a professor at New Jersey Institute of Technology. So I just want to share, I wrote this email to the board earlier and the principals earlier because I wasn't sure I would make it here either, but I want to share something from my professional life that I think pertains, and this is fielding two questions on a reference for students recently. So the first one, I had this student applying for work opportunity with a global engineering firm, and the question for me, as the reviewer, said, "Please rank this candidate's ability to lead a diverse team cultivated from a global workforce. Carefully consider any and all evidence the candidate has successfully navigated personal or cultural differences to produce successful project outcomes." And this is a very prestigious, high-paying, global engineering firm, right? Second one is from a really prestigious global, you know, national university, but very small acceptance rate. These graduates step into, you know, they go on to work for tech giants, Apple, Google, Microsoft, just for non-disclosure reasons, I'm not naming them, but it's a big one. So this question asked me, "Please provide specific descriptions or examples of how the candidate has handled situations where they disagreed with an idea, or where they worked with people whose perspectives, backgrounds, or identities were different from their own? What stood out about their approach?" I'm not going to say much beyond, our students need opportunities to field this kind of, like, experience. They need a base level at sort of, you know, six to eight and beyond education to be exposed to ideas that are challenging, including ones mom and dad don't talk to them about at home. And I applaud the board, and I encouraged, in my email today, I encouraged the board to keep this program going and to keep this kind of programming going because I want those opportunities for my kids. I see what's out there with the global workforce and what's expected, and I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Anyone else? Or anyone else want to get up and talk about something else? That's fine, too. Okay, all right. Before we end this evening, two things. The first thing, well, maybe three. So the first thing is, just on behalf of the board, I do have a prepared statement that I'm going to read. I decided to let it wait till the end to give everyone a chance to have their say, but on behalf of the board, for anyone who stood up this evening, it takes a lot of guts. I mean, it takes, I got to say, I am very honored to serve with these four individuals because it takes a lot of guts to sit up here, too, but it takes a lot of guts to stand up there and address the board and address the community, especially one that's so heated at the moment. So for anyone who stood up there, I'm honored by, I just want to thank you. The second thing is, before I read the statement, on a different note, I just want to also applaud the faculty and administrators that are here tonight to support one another. The only thing I disagree with that was said the entire night was the fact that we do not have a district staff, administration, and faculty that is one, that we have one that is one-sided, that is simply the only lie that was spoken here this evening, okay? Not spoken. Okay? Our district administration and our staff are the best. They care about our children as much as we care about them, and this Board of Education stands behind them and supports them in full solidarity. So I'm going to ask the board to applaud you. And then finally, before I read the statement, the board is, I have the whole notebook of notes from both sides of groups that spoke this evening. The board will continue to have these discussions in executive session tonight, believe it or not, we are going to stay. As much as everyone's like, "Are we? Yeah, we are." And we're going to continue those discussions moving forward. And then finally, before I read the statement, I just want to say that we lost a very dear member of our community, Mr. Ron Sanfilippo, lost his battle with pancreatic cancer. So anyone who knew, he was just inducted into Legends Park. He was a long-term serving athletic director at James Caldwell High School. He was a beloved mentor, a beloved human being. He was a person who strove for equality and equity, one of the first pioneers in our district, and he lost his battle with cancer. And to Ron's family, we are so sorry, and so I want to express the condolences on behalf of the board, to his family, and to the district staff that was very saddened by his passing. Okay? So, that being said, on behalf of the Board of Education, we understand and acknowledge the concerns raised by all parents regarding the recent Unity Assembly at Grover Cleveland Middle School. As a board, our primary responsibility is to ensure that every child, regardless of background, belief, identity, feels safe, respected, and included within our schools. We, as a Board of Education, are committed to fostering an environment where all students can learn and grow without fear of marginalization. The board supports the administration's ongoing efforts to create a welcoming and inclusive environment for every student. It is important to recognize that our role as a Board of Education is to provide educational experiences that promote respect, empathy, and understanding across a diverse range of viewpoints and identities. Political beliefs, whether from the board or administration, should never overshadow our commitment to our core mission, serving all children equitably. At the same time, we recognize that communication, which was the big theme this evening, between the school district and our families, can be improved. Moving forward, we will strive to provide parents with information and agendas ahead of time so they can make informed decisions about what is best for their children. We, however, will continue to ensure that any discussion or activities in our schools remain respectful to all perspectives and does not cause any harm or division. Above all, we want to assure our community that no child on any side of this issue should feel marginalized or alienated or trapped to the mother if she's still here. We remain steadfast in our belief that fostering unity and respect for all students is our most important priority. That being said, can I have a motion to enter into executive session and adjourn the meeting at now 9:08 PM? I'll make a motion. Can I have a second? A second. Brian?
All in favor, aye. All against, nay. Any abstentions?
No.
Motion carried.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. (applause)